To the flag, the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation and the God of visible, of liberty and justice for all.
Welcome. Do I have a motion for the consent agenda?
So move.
Actually, I have some corrections.
Okay.
I have a correction to the correction, so if I can pull off December 11th. Oh, I'm sorry. Really? Me?
Oh, my goodness.
I have a correction to the December 11th meeting minutes, the regular minutes, so if I could just pull those off the consent agenda, please.
Okay. So I have a motion without the December...
Motion to approve the consent agenda without...
You already did it.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion for that. All those in favor? Okay.
The December 11th minutes, I just want to... And I don't know, since this is the clarification, if we need to clarify this, or it says, "This is all fine, the minutes should reflect the vote," but I also amended that the vice chair vote was made by Polish and seconded by Black. Well, that's what I thought. We'll just throw it in.
Okay, now I'll have a vote on that.
A motion to approve December 11th minutes.
As amended, okay. Is that... All those in favor? Mr. Rerick?
Yes, appointments, middle school guidance counselor for the remainder of the year, Kathy Campanar-Sunden; elementary librarian for the remainder of the year, Kathleen Fanning; boys' basketball, boys' junior varsity, Zach Gillette; and freshman boys, Bob Murray; girls' basketball, junior varsity, Jeff Heath; freshman girls, Tom Falcone; boys' volunteer basketball coach, Nathan Mello.
Thank you. We don't have any correspondence, but I did go to the meeting last night, the budget hearing of the town council, and I gave all the school committee members their first pass-through on the provisional budget. It's already been amended, but just so you can kind of follow it along with the revenue and all that, because as we know, the budget is a whole with the school and the town in the end. So I just gave you all of that, so you can have it, okay? And the meeting was very good. It lasted till 11 o'clock. They went line-by-line item. It was very, very instructive. Thank you. Okay, Carol?
I'd like to make a motion to move item 6C, Spotlight on Success, up so that we can hear from our teachers.
There is one that's not on the agenda, but it's a young lady that we have here from McCassat School. So she was a late addition after the agenda went out. So I'm going to ask Mrs. Blaze to introduce our first guest.
I'll second it.
All those in favor of moving that?
Sorry.
That's okay. Thank you.
This student, Caitlin Allen, completely unexpected and wonderful. Prior to the vacation, her teacher, Mrs. Cornell, board pre-teacher at McCassat, asked her students to do 26 random acts of kindness to commemorate the victims of Sandy Hook Elementary School. And only one student did it, Michaela. She's a special young lady.
Thank you.
Thanks, sir. Thank you.
Thank you for that, Michaela.
I have a special gift for her.
That's wonderful.
Thank you very much.
That's wonderful. I don't know if you all remember, but last year, I put on the Agenda Spark, which I used in my class at Derby High School, students performing acts of real kindness, because I knew how important school climate is. That was the most important thing to me, how everybody treated each other and how it could help the kid that was right on the edge to draw them back in. So I thank you so much, Michaela, because you're the first one, since I mentioned it, that's done anything, and I know it's wonderful. And if all the other teachers and if the art teacher maybe could make a big spark sign with all big sparks coming out of it, and so I could hang it up back here, that would be lovely, or the bear could hold it. I'd appreciate that. Thank you very much.
Please make sure signs are small and portable.
Exactly, because Mr. Bragani will be carrying them.
Well, there is a sign ordinance, but I think if I'm carrying it, it'll be okay.
Speaking of Mr. Tracy, Adam's here to give a presentation. For those of you who weren't there back in December, there was a rollout of the most recent student mural, which is in one of the stairwells in the middle school, so I'll turn it over to Adam.
Can you pick it up? I don't know if it's in number first, or...
Land Trust, pardon.
Oh, I'm sorry. Well, sorry, Adam. We'll go to Mr. Phillips.
We're flexible.
And Mr. Fernandez.
Thank you for inviting us here today. I've got some slides that I'm going to show about some of the projects that we started in September, and I'll bring us right up to current date and a couple of new things that we've got in the plans. So in September, we do a Pardon Gray, Tiverton Land Trust event. Eddie, you want to just click that line? It's called the Country Day at Pardon Gray, and I get the high school students to pre-assemble about 50 bird nesting boxes, and the kids, the high school kids, help the younger kids to put these boxes together. And it's really a fun day. If you haven't been there, it's wonderful. We usually have about a dozen or 15 kids that come and help out, and it's really fun. One of the things I really like about this is my students always say to me, you know, it must be pretty easy to be a school teacher and that type of thing, and after a day of doing this, where little kids are hitting their thumbs with hammers, I got Band-Aids, they have to get all fixed up at the end of the day, they tell me, you know what, I take that back. It is a little bit tougher than I thought. So the Pardon Gray Day is really fun. In October, we did a really nice field trip to the International Yacht Restoration School. It was a really terrific day. You can just click a couple of them. Our students went down there and got a full tour of the facility. It was wonderful. This ties into our boat building program. Got one more. I'd like to thank the Tiverton Education Foundation. They sponsored, they gave us the money so that we could pay for the busing and for Eddie and myself to go, so that was really wonderful. We couldn't have done that without them. Go back one more. You can't? Okay. On the way back from the International Yacht Restoration School, we stopped by two boatyards, two large facilities, and we got to see how the real world is. And that was wonderful that those two companies let us in, showed us everything that they had to offer. And tomorrow, one of our students is going to go to one of those facilities and shadow, job shadow, the entire day. So I think that's one of the connections that this day, it's going to help out one of our students, and hopefully, a lot of our students. That ties right into our boat building program here. I've got some pictures of us starting to put one of our boats together. This is how we take a mold and wrap the sides of the boat. That is part of the transom that we put together where the motor will go. That's just one more step in the puzzle. And that's one of the boats in the water. That's a boat that we built two years ago. That's right down in Nanakwaket Pond, so they do actually float, which the kids, believe it or not, as we build these, the kids are like, "Mr. Phillips, I'm not sure this is really going to float." So, and the first time we put one boat in the water, I was sweating, because I wasn't sure it was going to float. And then that's last year's boat, right there. As fast as we can build these, I've got people calling and emailing, or they see them in the pond, they ask who's building them. Don's Marine has been wonderful. They've put our name out there, so we've got a list of probably three or four people that would really like to get on board and buy one of these. So it's a great project. This project is tying into something that I talked to Mr. Fazette and Mr. Rerick about. We've got a summer program that we're going to try to start this summer, a six-week program where we're going to take 10 students. They're going to get paid through the state. We're going to get to build a boat. They're going to get an OSHA certification. We're going to go on field trips. I think it's really going to be something that is going to help our program, help the students, and I just think it's, we're going in the right direction to get the kids certification, hands-on training, and I think it's really going to be wonderful. This is all tied into the Rhode Island Marine Trades Association. They've been wonderful in helping us do this, so I think we're really going in the right direction. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Ed Fernandez.
Oh, I got one more. I got one more. One more, sorry, one more. The Chase Corey House Project. You can't... Can you take a forward? No, you can go forward. This Chase Corey House Project was in the paper, I think, maybe a few weeks ago. Some people in town asked if I could take some of our students and go down to, it's a historical house, right down next to Gray's Ice Cream. It's about 290 years old. They asked if we could help shingle it, put some new gutters on, scrape the windows, so I've had three or four students that have really gotten involved with this. I think we've spent probably six or seven Saturdays, seven or eight hours, and we've gone down and shindled four sides. We've got a few more sides to go. It's been really neat for me to see the high school kids interact with people that are in their 50s, 60s, and 70s. I think they've been really impressed with how hard our kids work. They show up at 7:30 on a Saturday morning. Sometimes we'll do it on a Friday afternoon. They're there, they're excited. These are really, really wonderful kids. That's just one of the sides that we're just about all finished up with. I have three of the kids right there, Hannah, and Ryan, and Zach. Wonderful kids. I can't say enough about them. This has been a great project. I've gotten a lot of feedback from their parents, and their friends now want to get involved in the springtime, so I just, it's, the newspaper clip really talked about our kids, and it was good, but it's a big, big project. People in town have donated paint and materials, and there's a lot of people from the Historical Society that put in a lot of time as well. So I just want to make sure that everybody understands.
That's good.
It's a really, a big group project. I think the people from the Historical Society have really been impressed with our kids. They've really done themselves proud, so I'm impressed. I think if you drive by, you get a look at the building, it looks new again.
It does.
And it's a great project, so.
And I thank you for doing that with them. That's wonderful.
Okay, it's fun.
To get out in the community.
It's fun.
That's good.
So.
Thank you.
All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thanks, Phil. Mr. Ed Fernandez?
Yes, hi, good evening. I'm here to brief you on a few of the technical projects we have in development. First is a Smartboard clone, and then I'll talk briefly about our independent study projects. I have two seniors who report to me every day, period seven, to help develop projects for engineering and for our green energy group of projects that we're developing. Also, I'll talk quickly about the senior projects and the big, I'm sorry, the senior projects, and then the secret project we've been working on. About a year and a half ago, we saw this on the internet, and we thought it looked kind of neat. We thought we'd try to duplicate it. It's a Smartboard clone called Smoothboard. It uses off-the-shelf parts and a Nintendo WiMo as the camera, which is a Bluetooth device, along with a Bluetooth adapter in your computer and some software I downloaded from a man in Singapore, and it works pretty good. It's global, right? There's a shot of the camera up top. And just quickly, a few functions. Seems to have about 95% of the functions, an on-screen keyboard. It calibrates just like a Smartboard with an infrared pen that I'm holding. You can open up a Word document, anything, and it has a full palette of drawing tools, arrows, different colors. I used this to teach an electronics lesson a day or so ago. You can erase part of it or the whole thing on the fly. It's also got highlighting tools with different colors. You can use to highlight whatever you want and then erase it, of course. You can minimize the palette, minimize whatever you're working on. And then you can go and open up a website or anything on the desktop, just like you were on your own PC. Pretty good. The next one we had is, these are the two students that report to me every period seven, Zach Silver and Ryan Merrick, the same boys participating in the Chase Corey Project. This is the first project they developed this year for our engineering class called the External Combustion Engine. It runs on any heat source, and it's really just a transfer of heat energy to kinetic energy. It's a good engineering project. We saw it on the web. I talked to a guy in Great Britain, and he sent me some plans, and we rounded up the materials, which is really just cardboard, fishing wire, a balloon, and a soda can, and a candle for the heat source. And the pie tin is the cooling system. Just fill it with water, and it keeps the piston cool. And as long as you keep putting candles under it and water in it, it'll run indefinitely. Next is our solar cellphone charger. We just took a bunch of solar cells we found on eBay and tied them together in a series circuit to produce about 4.5 volts, and then we cut the end off of a connector of a cellphone and charged it. If you can see, the display, it says "charging." Of course, the other battery clip would be for an auxiliary battery that you can charge during the day and then plug your phone in at night when there's no sun, so you could run the phone completely off the grid. Next is a step up from that. We saw this on the internet also, and I contacted the person who had the plans that he sent to me, and we rounded up the parts, and I got a hold of a tin lunchbox, and it's able to produce about 18 volts and charge an onboard battery to, again, charge any i or any USB-connected There's the electronics inside and the onboard battery. The kids had a good time with this. As you can see, once you flick it on, it'll charge any i, anything.
Take that to the airport.
It's even got a flashlight in it, too.
They're going to be all set in the next hurricane.
Yeah.
That was a lot of fun.
Send to the federal government.
Oh, I'm sorry, I skipped over the senior project. The same two boys working with us were sponsoring their senior project. One is building a solar array, and the other one's building a wind turbine. But this is the big one that we've had sort of in our back pocket for a while. I've had this idea in my head for about 20 years, but the kids call it the Big Tamale. We're in the process of starting something really ambitious. We call it EV, or Electric Vehicle. 20 years ago, most of the models we were seeing coming out of colleges and all were crude. The chassis were made out of iron and very heavy and very expensive, so I sort of had to wait for technology and off-the-shelf parts to sort of catch up with themselves, but now everything's readily available, and we're going to do it. We started cutting the material for the frame, the chassis, this morning, which is going to be made out of reinforced plastic. I expected to hold, it's a one-passenger vehicle, I expected to hold someone 150 pounds or less, and our goal is to get it to go about 20 miles on a charge, a couple of small, wet cell batteries. As the project progresses, I'll keep you posted, and I'll bring it in. I expect to have a prototype up and running in the spring. We'll bring it here, and we'll show everyone, and what kids can do with a little bit of technology and motivation. I've already got, a very generous guy in town has given us enough money to pay for the electronics, and after the prototype, I'd like to build a second one and maybe have a half-year class where two teams could compete, split the class in half, and have two teams design their own with the same electronics and specifications and see what we come up with. That's where I hope it'll evolve to.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Thanks, Ed.
You're welcome.
That concludes what we got, and I thank you for your kind attention.
Thank you very much.
Okay, Adam? Good job, guys. Yeah, I can drive around in it. Wave. We'll have to get a bigger model. Don't worry, buddy, we'll get an SUV size.
With the booster.
And I'll get it built so you and I can ride in it. How's that?
So I'm Adam Tracy, one of the art teachers at the middle school, and I was asked to show a mural that we just finished at the middle school. It's the third one that I've done at the school. This one was in conjunction with the Tiverton After School Arts Program. We had 14 students from fifth through eighth grade coming, and we'd work once a week on Wednesdays for about an hour and a half for eight weeks, and we made a really beautiful piece of artwork that's now in the stairwell at the middle school. We had a little opening where we had a great turnout of parents and community members, and some of you were there. Thank you again for coming. And our hope is to, this summer, get out in Tiverton somewhere and do a piece in town with the kids. So what I did is I made a video of them working on it, which is what I'm going to show you now, and the hope was to sort of get people excited and to show what these kids can do, which is pretty amazing, so. Here we go. Thank you, it was a ton of fun. The kids are looking forward to doing another, and it really brightens up the hallways. It's a really fun project, so thank you.
And thank you, Mr. Tracy, and I love the message. The message was the most important part for me.
Yeah, absolutely.
And also, I love the color of her hair. That's what all the kids were saying when I was here.
Mr. Cabral, Ranger School Science Initiative.
Thank you. We've had some interesting discussions and some very hard-wringing conversations here with our PCL, and if you wanted to make science fun and interesting hands-on. They first came to me about three or four months ago, talked about different ways we could present things in science that was hands-on in that curriculum. They took our year-to-glance paperwork from our science curriculum, looked at all those and tied in, and I'm going to turn the presentation over to Mrs. Sarah Farley. Charles Cirello was also here, and Paul, we have two teacher leaders, Denise Currie and Jenny Currie.
I should have brought, but we have the paper for them. So I'm Sarah Farley. I have three boys that go to Ranger Elementary School. And we started, I guess, we started talking to Manny a few months ago. This fall, we were kind of talking amongst ourselves, and we were looking at our teachers, who we love. We really think our kids are getting a great education at Ranger. I've had a wonderful experience there with all three of my children, and we're kind of talking to the teachers, talking to our family members. We all have either siblings or in-laws that are in education, and we're kind of hearing a lot about how the new stresses that are put on teachers because of our education system the way it is today. And we're kind of saying, all right, we can't change the system, but is there something that we can do to help support our teachers, to interest our students even more, and to also build a little more of a sense of community within our Ranger School? So this is sort of what came out of that. We're calling it Science Rocks, and it's a collection of both in the classroom and after-school programs to try to spark interest in science. I'm going to go through, Denise and Jenny have been our kind of teacher people, and we're kind of at the start of this, but I think we have a pretty good buy-in from all of our teachers, and we're all pretty excited about what's going to be happening. We did look at the GSEs for each of the grades and also the Dana Curriculum to make sure that we were correlating with what was going on in the classroom and to try to build upon that. I'm just going to go through quick of month-to-month what we have planned. In January, we're going to bring back the math nights that used to happen at the old Ranger School. Right now, a lot of our programs are sort of geared towards the third and fourth grade students, but we're hoping that we're going to be able to expand that to the younger grades, too. Next week, we're going to start with our third and fourth grade math night. Children are going to come with their parent or guardian. We're going to have a variety of different math stations set up. They'll go to each station with their parent, and it'll either be a puzzle, a game, some sort of math-related activity. We're also going to, once the kids go through all the different stations, have a mystery math guest, where the kids will ask a lot of different questions to a professional that we have come in, and they're going to try to decide what type of job they do, and then that person will then kind of explain how math is incorporated into their career. In February, we're going to have on the 6th, the 8th, and the 13th, Eric from Pow Science, who's been at Ranger quite a few times in the past, is going to come and do Force in Motion Assembly for all the kids in the school. Grades K, 1 and 3 are already doing the Force in Motion in the classroom at that time. Second and fourth grade are doing the Energy Unit, but they're, the concepts are overlapping. February, we're going to have our first science night. We're pretty excited about it. And again, right now, geared towards the third and fourth grades, five different rooms, probably about three pretty, hopefully, kind of eye-catching, large, hands-on experiments, and then a variety of smaller kind of displays or experiments. We're going to touch upon energy, force in motion, two rooms for a force in motion, heat and electricity, and astronomy. This is going to be a parent-teacher run. The kids will come with their parent and will be going through the stations with their parents, but will be there to answer questions or to guide them along also. We're hoping that for the younger kids, the siblings will have some type of supervision with some science-related activity, too. At the end of February, we're going to have Eric come back to do an after-school program that's going to run on Tuesdays for five weeks. He's going to do a science club, different topic each week, and he'll have, again, hands-on experiments to kind of reinforce the concept that he's teaching that week. In the month of March, Allison... that he's teaching that week. In the month of March, Allison Hackett, one of the parents already runs an after-school program, she's going to run on that same Tuesday as a Pow, but she's going to hopefully be able to offer the first and second graders a science-related, a couple of science-related programs. At the end of March, we're going to have a second, either science night, more geared towards the natural sciences, or I've been talking a lot with Gloria Crist from the Tiverton After Schools Art Program about trying to get a local artist in who does sort of a combination of art and science, and have assembly-type program for the whole school. Also in March, but on the Thursdays, I'm going to have Ramosa, and a Ramosa After School Program. That's a Rhode Island Museum of Science and Art. I'd never heard about it prior to kind of starting all this research this fall. It's a really great, it's not really a place. It's a museum without walls, but they have probably about fifteen traveling exhibits, and they do a lot of educational programs where they combine art and science. So when I was kind of researching the change from STEM to STEAM, this is kind of where it led me. And they're going to come in and do their sculpting series. They're going to touch upon the characteristic of materials, animal habitats, and structure and survival also. In April, we're going to have Squid Day again. We've missed it for a year or two? A year. So Ron DeFranzo from the East Bay Collaborative is going to come in and do squid dissections with the third and fourth graders. And the dissection will support the human and structure and survival units that both grades are going to be studying at that point in time. The end of April, we're starting another after-school program. This one is going to be teacher-and-parent run. We were talking about doing science fair projects when we were in school, and I still remember it. So we're going to have the kids work on science fair projects. We'll help them come up with ideas, make sure that they're doable in the six weeks that we have. We're going to meet for an hour and a half on Wednesdays. And again, right now, third and fourth grade, but if we have the help and the volunteers, hopefully, for probably a shorter version for the younger kids, four weeks, and we may pit the topics on that and have them work in groups. In May, the fourth graders are going to go to the planetarium. In Middletown, this is probably the only thing that's out of whack for curriculum, what they're working on in the classroom, but they don't do solar system until the end of the year, and we thought that it would be important for them to have some exposure to the topic prior to the new cap. In June, the third and fourth graders are going to be going to the Audubon Society for the Coastal Exploration Program. This supports the structure and survival for third grade and the independence of ecosystems for the fourth grade curriculum. I actually just booked the Lloyd Center to come in for our kindergarten students, too, for their estuary on wheels, which they've been in in the past, too. June, we're going to have, I've been working with Gloria on this, too, we're hopefully going to have a kind of science fair project and art night, where the kids who've done the Tiverton After School Arts Program can come in, and we'll have our little galleries set up, and they can show all their artwork, and our kids can show off their science fair projects that we've worked on this spring. And in June, we're going to finish up with our science extravaganza. And Ron, from the East Bay Collaborative, is going to come back, help us set up, and we'll have a day of doing all sorts of science experiments, and he'll get us set, and then the parents and teachers will sort of continue out the day with the kids. So, right now, that's where we're starting, and we're excited about doing it. So, and if anybody, we're mainly funded by our PTO right now. If anybody knows the funding that I can go after in any way, let me know. I really would love to be able to continue this, you know, throughout the years. So if there's grants that people know that I could, you know, write up for, I would be happy to do it.
Thank you. That wonderful, wonderful plan.
Thank you.
Is that it, Mr. Feary?
Yes.
Okay. School policy?
Yes, we have for public comment, our policy subcommittee has drafted a video surveillance on school department property policy. It's been reviewed by our attorneys, and we're here posted it per our own policies on new policy. And it's before the committee, and anyone would like to speak to it.
So I have just one question. There is no current policy regarding photography or videography in the schools?
There are pieces about using cell phones in each of the school's handbooks, but not on overall district policy. We put the cameras in over the last two years, and we put the cameras in first, and really the policy has come after we, you know, put the cameras up. And we've had them up again for the past couple of years.
So there is a cellphone policy of some sort?
Mm-hmm.
And can you just sort of review with me the substance of it? I'm not...
Each school's are pretty much the same. Students are allowed to have them in their possession, but can't use them during, you know, during the school day unless they are in the nurse's office or being dismissed, you know, and they need to contact their parent for dismissal, unless not to use them during the school day.
Is there any policy that covers outsiders using photography, videography, any kind of?
That's what this...
I know this does, but you said the cellphone covers what the students can do.
Just the students. We didn't have anything specifically for that, no.
Okay.
We have it for people, you know, releasing pictures. We have, parents have to sign off. If the Daily News wanted to take pictures and students were in it, at the start of the year, we asked parents, do you mind if, you know, your child's picture be in the paper for whatever, you know, if it should come up? And we've sent that out. We've just, it's been more of a practice than a policy, that we've done that for a number of years, especially with our younger students.
So I think the last clause in the policy says something about you can't do, you can't take video without authorization. So there would be, I imagine, times when parents would want to come in for a school program, there'll be some sort of announcement, I guess, that this is okay to do it at this time, but...
Yeah, this was directed, again, not at our parents, and we can put a disclaimer up before any performance that...
Right.
Parents can...
Video tape.
Or games.
Yeah.
But this is for people coming onto school property and filming either our students or our employees without their knowledge. So now, if we see that, we can say, we can have the police, we can call the police and say, hey, this is against our policy. Want them removed from, you know, from that happening. I want that to stop.
But we did talk about that, that, you know, parents quite often come in and they'll tape concerts or...
Yes, again, it's not for our parents. It's...
Right.
Right, no, that's...
But we'll need to, like you're saying, expressly make an announcement so people know it's okay, it's all right, you may tape.
But that's, it's for outsiders, not parents or people coming in to, you know, film. But, for example, a few years ago, we had an incident where someone was filming our students coming in and out of the middle school.
Right.
Right, well, that's actually sort of what I'm getting at, I guess, is that...
That's not allowed. Under this, this would be reinforced under this policy. We can tell them to stop, but now we have a policy that we put for us.
So was there a policy that covered that person?
No.
No.
Prior?
It was a one-time, and we've just never really addressed it prior to now.
Okay.
Good job, Policy Committee, what you always do. Thank you.
So this will be posted online, and then people will be able to see it?
It's already posted.
It's already posted. See it, look at it, and then we won't be approving it until the next meeting, and we'll take comments even then.
Absolutely.
If we don't have any other...
Yeah, just like we do any of our new policies.
Health and Wellness. I spoke to the committee last time about us joining the, trying to be chosen as one of the eight districts that do the health and wellness, so I put it in your packet so you could get a look at it. And all I need is your permission for us to put our application, and it doesn't cost any money or anything. We just want to be part of the state development of this policy, so it'll be a moderate policy on food in the schools and also on the physical exercise. I want to concentrate more on that. Now, I think we've done a lot with the food, but I want to do more on the physical. And we have a teacher interested in doing that with us, so that would be, I just wanted to pass it through you before we applied. But the deadline's coming up soon, so we have to decide if we want to do it or not. It'll be Diane and I that will go to the few sessions that I do have. I'm her co-pilot. I do an excellent job trying to find where we're going.
And what is this, what will this latest thing sound?
It's just to, they're going to, the health and wellness, that's part of the state law. They're just going to try to have a model health and wellness to pass out to the school.
Oh.
You don't have to...
They're looking for people to...
They're looking for people for input. You won't have to use it, but it will just be a model for everybody.
Right. In 2010, there were some updates to the federal regulations, so as a result, we need to update our policy. Being part of this would allow us to complete a self-assessment on what our policy has and doesn't have, and then participate in some group discussion to share resources and strategies to update our policy.
By all means.
Okay. Is that okay with everyone? You want to come, Yanni?
Do you have the motion?
You want to come, Yanni? Yes, please.
I made the motion to approve, apply to participate in the Wellness Collaborative Initiative in school year.
Second.
All those in favor? Okay, Diane, we have to take the test now.
All right.
We have to take a test, an SAT test. I saw that, and I said, wait a minute, on fitness, I'd do better at that. Okay, thank you. That's right. Waste water treatment, oh no, Mr. Feary.
I'm stood back on the spotlight, and it's unsuccessful. I was hoping...
I know, that was last...
That's why we framed the meeting.
That was going downhill.
Hate to be a counter. Our engineer's been meeting with DEM in the last month or so. The results that we got from the nitrogen test weren't ideal. Apparently, our original plan of putting the outflow of our system in between North Breton and the softball field isn't going to accommodate the requirements that DEM has said we need to follow. So we need to look at another option as far as where our outflow is coming from the system. And the engineer has suggested that at the end of North Breton, where there's woods and water district property, is probably his second-best choice. So what the engineer has done, and what I wanted to get the permission of the school committee to do, is ask to be on the agenda of the next water district meeting, and he will attend and present our options as far as requesting an easement to use their property for this purpose. And I'll also be attending the meeting with him. So if there's any objection to that...
Do they have a Plan B if they say no?
There is, but it would entail...
It's more costly.
Yeah, that, I probably don't want to discuss the other option at this point, but we're hoping that we can come to an agreement with the water district.
Well, what this would do is, it's very possible, because I know the soccer fields, we're thinking of tying into our system anyway.
Yes, that might work out well.
So it's possible, it might be even more beneficial
Yeah.
to the rec department, because I'm not exactly, we're not exactly sure where he's going to recommend to put it, but it's going to be significantly closer
To the field.
To where the field is.
It'll be easier for them to do that soccer field.
Right, so it'll be simpler. So we're hoping that it'll be an easier connect when that happens, because I know that's what we're talking about.
And it'll help them out, too.
So hopefully...
That'll be good. I hope so.
So it was, the nitrogen levels weren't acceptable at that site, and that was our best site on all our property.
At least it was our property. We have very little options as far as our property, so now we need to expand our radius of where we're looking.
So what's this going to do to the timeline?
Right now, we haven't, until we meet with the water district and figure out exactly what their timetable is and what needs to be done legally for something like this, we're not going to request DEM permission to extend it. We're sticking with the timetable that we just had them approve last month.
Okay.
So do I have a motion for Mr. Feary to go?
Again, that's subject, you know, once we pick the site, you then have to go to DEM, say, here's the site.
And see if they like it.
You have the plan.
Yeah.
You know, is this going to work?
I mean, the good news is the actual facility hasn't changed. It's just where the location of the outflow is in the air right now.
Didn't we just get an extension from them, too?
We did.
So now this is going to...
But everybody knew that it was all predicated on what we had designed, meeting their requirements.
And we're, once, we've been working very closely with them, and if there is an, I don't foresee any problems if they, because it will then be on them. You know, we'd be giving them the plan, saying, here we are, based on what you just told us, here's our new proposal. So then it'll be up, you know, then we, if we have to adjust the timeline, we'll do so based on what they tell us, and then ask for an extension if needed then.
They want us to do it, and they've been very willing to work with us to meet any timetable. Like, last summer, we were supposed to get most of the work done because the schedule of the school year didn't coincide with potentially working on the construction. They had no problem in giving us an extension. So, I mean, I report to them monthly on the status of everything, and they're well aware of what our situation is.
Do you anticipate it costing more money as a result?
Probably, but it's just a matter of the pipe ending maybe a quarter of a mile or half mile further, so I don't think it's going to be a huge amount of money, but...
Just more pipe?
Yeah.
Well, in the...
Because the site's still pretty much the same.
As with anything, the longer we wait, the more things...
That's right, yeah.
Maybe this could be part of the science fair.
I was thinking that. They could test the nitrogen.
There's probably some...
Water tables.
Something could be exploited there.
So you're looking for a motion to go before the...
The water district at their next meeting, or when they can accommodate us to propose using their property.
We'll make that motion.
Second.
All those in favor? Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Feary, staying on top of that. Okay, so now we have...
Homeschooling.
Homeschooling approval.
I'm recommending approval for the homeschooling request that you have before you.
Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second? All those in favor? I have to. It's a state law.
Can't you abstain?
With regret.
No. Under duress.
No, I know that, but can't you abstain?
High school auditorium seats?
Okay. The bid has come in. We placed a bid per our last meeting in December to replace and reupholster the 696 seats and replace the 49 damaged seats in the auditorium. The price came in a little bit above our estimate. The estimate at the time, I believe, was around $51,000. The actual price came in at $58,870. We only had one bidder on the project, and as you can see, they come with extensive references. And pending, once we verify the references, I'm recommending that we award the bid to American Office Services.
We had a few inquiries, but ultimately, this company that bid was the only one that put forth a bid for us. I think it is very specialized. And on a positive note, the fire department, in their latest inspection of the building, wanted us to treat all of the fabric in all the auditorium seats with flame retardant material. We were about to get a quote for that, and then this sort of came through, and the quote that we have from this company has the flame retardant material already in the seats, so that's another expense that we potentially can avoid by going ahead with this project.
So they're doing all the seats? I thought it was just a certain number?
They're replacing the damaged seats.
The damaged seats.
Forty-nine of them.
But then they're recovering everything?
And then they reupholstered the rest.
And they're from Ohio?
Yes.
Yes.
And they actually sent someone here, so they know exactly what our, the status of the offices are.
The jobs that they list are up and down the East Coast.
We awarded, we said if we awarded the bid to them, would they put us underneath the Arkansas Razorback list on their...
What's their time for getting it done?
We haven't talked to them yet.
No, we, we haven't talked about scheduling it yet.
And what about the color?
The color is... The colors, they gave us one swatch, a series of swatches. The work done, the blue that we have for the backing will still be there, which is a teal blue, if you've all been there. I've picked six, or proposed six choices that have a plaid match in it to make it hold the dirt a little better, but leave it to you guys to make that color choice.
It'll be there for a long time, so...
I think students should choose this.
Well, there is one, I think it's, Mrs. Carol has it on the top left, there is one, on the very top left is a gold.
No.
I believe we should have one gold for Sally.
No, 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 don't do that.
And then 600...
She brings it with her.
Oh, she can. That's the only thing we could agree on, was the gold for Sally, but those were the six, in all seriousness, those were the six.
It's going to be there for a long time, just make it dark.
Dark, so they'll show the dirt well, right?
And again, it is something that we'll be, if awarded, it's something we won't be doing for a very long time.
I'll make a motion to approve the auditorium seat bid as recommended by the superintendent, Mr. Fiore.
Second.
Who picks the color?
Mr. Fazette.
If an office staff, Mr. Fazette, was charged with the responsibility...
Well, I'm sure they'll have an opinion on it.
My office does. They've already looked at it, so...
You can get a consensus between your two offices.
Right, just all get together and decide what you like.
Mrs. Cabello's already decided for me, so...
Yeah, and Mrs. Berg and...
So you can all get together and...
All right, we'll build a consensus on this.
Build a consensus on that, okay. All those in favor? Okay.
Thank you. Thank you.
Budget?
Yes, I have before you, or tonight I'd just like to go over our proposed budget for next year, for the upcoming school year, I should say. When I put the budget together with Doug and the building principals, some of the things that we built our budget on, some assumptions that we used, first of all, our, the budget would not exceed the state spending cap of 4%, contrary to, again, we've been through these budget cycles for quite a few years, a number of us, and there's always, you know, the discussion or the rumors that, oh, the school department's going to come in over the spending cap. They want to spend over the cap, well, that's, A, that's not true, it never has been, and B, again, for the record, that was our first assumption, we're not going to come to the cap or come close to the cap. Our student enrollment numbers, again, because we do the budget so early, as of right now, we're going to project that it's relatively stable. In other words, we won't have to bring anyone on. Now, with that said, we are very close to maximizing our elementary enrollments at several grade levels at a couple of our schools, so that could change as we get our enrollments come in between now and September. But as of right now, based on our previous enrollments and projections, we think we're going to stay relatively stable, so that we won't need to hire any more additional staff at this point. Many of the line items, we tried to zero-budgeted and have been zero-budgeted. We're using a health insurance increase of 9%. This is the most recent information that Doug was able to obtain from the trust. And the pension costs for our teachers will be 10.8% increase from the previous year, and that's from the pension board.
When you say zero-budgeted, you mean there's no increase?
Right, zero-budgeted.
With the pension cost, I know we had a big jump last year, do we know how many years we're going to see something like a 10% or 11% increase? Will it eventually level out to less than...
It's very difficult to predict, because a lot of it's based on the actuarial reports that are done every two or three years, so based on how the stock market performs and their investments, you really, you really can't predict what your allocation's going to be.
So they recalculate this every year?
Every few years, based on the actuarial reports, and then the state pension committee will get together and set the rate for the coming year, but there's always constantly moving assumptions and investment returns, so it's almost impossible to go more than a year out on what the rates go.
But last year, we did save money, because we were projected at a million-dollar increase, and it came in, what, 10, 200 and something thousand last year?
Yeah, and we've actually had some offsetting factors in our budget that, and the state's actually reimbursing a portion of the pension, the increase in this year's results, so we don't see the full impact of the 10% increase on our budgetary line, which is, which is good.
So with that said, and again, some of this is familiar, but again, this will be on our website. We calculate, if you were to calculate the maximum potential that we could generate, the 4% on the tax levy, it would allow the school department, or provide the school department just over $900,000 in additional spending, $901,85. In our state aid numbers that we've gotten from the Department of Education, again, it's early, but based on what they're telling us, we will receive an additional $70,000, $77,000 in state aid. Now again, that's, it's a decrease from last year, but it's still an improvement, because if you recall, when the state aid numbers first came out, when the funding formula was first passed, we were scheduled to lose approximately $115,000 a year. So we've been fortunate to date, and hopefully this number, that will hold.
This is actually the first time that the trend has gone down. Each time that a new allocation had come out, we were progressively getting better, and it kind of maxed out this year, we were about $270,000 higher than last year. But then, I just went a few weeks ago to a seminar where they had a first draft of this, and they've recalculated our, the funding formula, and we only have the increase, as Mr. Eric said, of around $70,000. So our increase is still there, but it's not as significant as this year.
And when I, and I'll get into it in a second, our proposal increase, the initial, the first pass, we're asking from local side, it will cost $604,511, which represents a 2.7% increase on the, on the local side. So while we're going to go up three and a half, 3.4%, the impact on, on, on local taxes, or the local increase will be 2.7%. So if the committee had to, and believe me, we have the need, but we chose not to, our maximum number that we could generate in state aid to spend would be $1.2 million. And as you can see, if you look through the numbers, we're just over $900,000 in additional spending, so again, we're well below what we could...
It's nearly $300,000 below the cap potential number, which I don't ever recall us being that far below, at least on a first draft.
Not at the beginning.
So the 1.2 million is a combination of local and state aid?
State aid. So if we maximize our state aid number...
So 77 is an increase?
Is an increase over, right, the total, not the state aid number, and then if you were to combine the two, it'd be, it would get you to the 1.2 million. I'll show, we'll show it to you in another slide.
Okay, but that's, but that's a 4% increase.
Right, that's a maximum cap, that's, we said to the voters, we need to go to 4%.
It's pushing again, this additional $77,000, is that more, 77,000 more than we're getting this year?
Yes.
Okay, so we are, in fact, not seeing that $100,000 or...
Right, $115,000.
No, in fact, it, no, it's, each year, the assumptions have gotten favorable from that initial pass of we were losing 100 and change each year, to the fact, to the point where this current near fiscal year, 2013, we have almost $280,000 of additional funds over last year, and then it's, the increase is still there, but it's, it's only the $77,000.
So we got the 280 plus the 77.
But tell them why, though.
Well, it's a complicated formula based on many factors, including the value of the town's real estate, but a driving factor, and I think what's, what's causing our number to fluctuate, is the Title I, free and reduced lunch population.
So that's not good news for the town.
No.
So we're poorer, so we're getting more money?
That's how the state, that's, and again, for folks at...
Our students are needier, we are...
Right, for folks at home, this whole, this whole formula that came out in 2010 was based on taking the current state aid number and then finding a formula that could fit all the districts into it. And a lot of it had to do with poverty and ability to pay. Tiven, according to the Department of Ed, numbers that they use, that is provided by the town, we're a well-off community, in Rides Eyes. But since then, we've also seen that increase as part of the formula in our free and reduced population, free and reduced hot lunch population. So while the value of the town may look on paper like it, it's above average for the state, our population says otherwise. Our student population is different, so we've been able to achieve some improvement. If you look at our neighbors, I believe Middletown is looking at 100-plus thousand dollar cut for next year, because of this, the way they calculate the formula. And I think Portsmouth might be in the same situation, so the fact that we're able to obtain any additional state aid from the previous year is fortunate for us, for any district.
We have 2,000 students in the system, something like that?
Close to the 1,900, but yeah.
So what's the number for free and reduced lunch?
We are running, Diane, Al, he's on number...
So 20%?
400 students.
Is that mostly in the elementary or in the high schools?
Spread out. Primarily at Picassett, but also at, then it's equally distributed at Ranger and Fort Barton. Fort Barton has a significant number of people, don't realize that. It's not quite as high as Ranger, but it has a significant population.
And it tends to go down, especially at the high schools.
Well, because the students don't apply.
They don't, they don't, they don't fill it out.
Right, and as the kids get older, they...
They don't fill it out.
They don't apply for it. But you assume that if you've had these children for, you know, seven, eight, 10 years, which we have in most cases, because we have a pretty stable population, those kids, they just simply go off the rules, because they don't, they don't ask for it.
So it's all self-reported?
Yes.
You have to fill it out.
You have to fill out the forms.
So students who qualify or who do not apply for free and reduced hot lunch could have the effect of reducing our state aid?
Right, that's correct.
They also do, excuse me, they also do look at the town census for poverty, because when I'm receiving the figures from Title I, they'll relate an increase or a decrease to the town census, which they don't do every year, so every couple of years, so that's also part of the picture.
So we really should be motivated to try and enroll those students, because they're using that as the marker of what we can afford to spend, but if they're not enrolled, we still have the addition, you know, presumed additional cost of educating those students still.
Right, but again, we ask, we send the forms out, and, you know, we ask that the parents...
I understand that can be a difficult thing to negotiate.
You know, if the parents still fill it out for us or report...
Does guidance try to work as much as payout?
We, we, they encourage, yeah.
Mr. Eric implemented centralized student registration three years ago, I think it was, Mr. Eric. What that does, that allows us to capture more of the after account.
And we're getting more state aid as a result.
The other team that comes in that has maybe a high school student, a middle school student, or a high school student and an elementary student, we're more apt to get the forms back at the elementary level than we are at the high school level, because high school kids might just not break form or whatnot. So when we capture that type of scenario, the state takes it based on family registration. So if we get it at the elementary level, we automatically, where our computer system works, know enough to also capture it for the high school student, sibling as well.
Which helps.
And then the state recently automated some of their free and reduced lunch accounts based on, basically, I'm not sure exactly what the program's called, but if you apply for a minimum of assistance from the state, you automatically get qualified there. We compare our lists automatically to match with, you know, a month, so that if they capture there and we have to fill the forms at the district level, again, we capture that information, and we're able to qualify that through that system as well, so...
Which is nice, because you don't have to fill out forms five different times.
Because we've done that, and it corresponds with our increase in the state aid since three years ago when we did start the centralized registration, so we were able to capture everybody all at once, and again, hopefully we'll continue, you know, getting more, capturing more and more.
The last thing you want to do as a family is have to fill out five forms.
Right.
So I guess the thing you would, I guess we would prob, is there a way of looking at that, to see if, are there students who are falling off in the middle and high schools? If it's a significant number, maybe there's something we should really be doing about that, because that's really going to impact our state aid, and you're sort of transferring the cost then to, or, you know, to the taxpayers who are not in that group? I'm not really probably expressing myself.
No, I...
You can encourage, but you can't back anyone.
No, absolutely, but...
I'd also, and I...
I could see it would be a very difficult thing to maybe try and pursue.
And I think it's something that I'd also want to talk to our attorney about, to see how much access we do have, and can we say...
Can you track like that?
Can we track like that? Do we have that, you know, I mean, we do have the ability, but, you know, what can we do?
Yeah, I guess I'm not saying going and looking at, I'm not, I'm not saying necessarily going and looking at by, by name or, or address or anything like that, but if you say you've got 500 students in the elementary schools, or 600 students in the elementary schools, and 20% of them are reduced free lunch, and you have 0% in the high schools, I'm not saying, there may not be anything you can do about that, but that, but maybe there is, and sort of knowing that there is that drop off, and therefore it's really affecting the calculation or the formula for the state aid, may be something we need to really know.
I'd have to look at the numbers, I can break it down. Right now, the district...
Yeah, I mean, if it, if it's 20% in the elementary schools and it's 17% in the high schools, you're probably...
I think it's going to be, the percentage is going to drop if the higher you progress throughout the grade level.
As I expect it would, I mean, they may be, you know, they may have jobs, and they may therefore, you know, be able to support themselves to a certain extent, but if it's a drastic, then we're, you know, still, we have that cost still, educating them, when in fact, you know, we're losing money on the formula that the state's using.
That's something we can certainly try to pursue, to see if we can do a better job of capturing, capturing them.
And then maybe it's just a better education program.
Yeah, not necessarily capture, you know, trying to, you know...
And getting the help they need for the lunch.
Capture, meaning, identify, be able to...
Understanding what the numbers are.
Get the services to the folks that need it.
Right, ultimately, you know, we're, we're hopefully helping them, but also it may help us understand why our budget props, you know, problems are the way they are.
This is just a summary of essentially what we've just been talking about regarding the free and reduced, not in the depth, obviously. Again, every year I talk to the principals, we meet, they ask for things that they need, and I then say I understand, and they don't always get what they ask for. This current budget maintains all our level of services that we currently have now, with once, a couple of changes that we'll talk about in a minute. Here's just, for the numbers people, here's a by category under the chart of accounts, and maybe Al can get rid of the little icons on the left, but we break our, our budgets right now are a lot easier to read than they were just a few years ago, thanks Al. And you can go through, go through them, and you can see for the most part, compensation, which is for all our employees, increased 2.4%, that also includes steps for our teachers. Benefits increased by one and a half percent from our current year. Professional tech services decreased by almost 14%. Asked to purchase property services. I'll turn it over to our chart of accounts person, and he can...
For the most part, it's not a, it's not a drop in how we've allocated the funds.
Re-classifying again?
Yeah, we're still kind of, every year, our chart of accounts definitions change, and it's sort of a dynamic definition. Al, from year to year, his budget isn't changing on technology, in total.
And the increase in benefits of one and a half percent, that includes the 9% increase in health insurance costs?
Correct, and that, that's a great question, because what we've seen, and not only for this year, but for last year, is we've seen a significant drop off in our retirees, which in many cases, we're, we're paying 50 to 75% of the premium, when they reach 65, they roll off of our responsibility, and we're no longer responsible for paying that. So all you need is a few of those to drop off, and it offsets a significant portion of our, of our increase that we're projecting for next year. In addition to that, a lot of the new hires that we've had are on single plans as opposed to our retirees that are on family plans.
So it's a balance of it.
So it's worked out quite well this year, where our, the projected increase is offset by a lot of these other factors.
And it's also important to note, however, though, that with the pension changes, while the district has achieved significant savings in the last couple of years, all our numbers are going to, it's going to, it's almost like a freeze, because all the people that Doug just talked about, eventually will get, in most cases, married, or need a family plan. But we're not going to be losing anybody in retirement. So, and we won't be able to achieve any savings either through hiring new teachers, because no one's going to be leaving, because they've changed the retirement system for most of our teachers, have to work to 67. A lot of people in the public, public sentiment, that's great, that they work to 67. Well, from an economic standpoint, what Treasurer Raimondo and her group didn't really speak to was what's the impact on the districts regarding these types of issues? What's it going to cost a district 10 years out, when you can't replace your veteran teachers with a younger group of people at a lower cost, and then over a 10-year window, build that cost back up? There was a reason for why steps were put in.
Right.
And it was for management's sake, so management could control costs. At some point, somebody figured out, this is a way for us to control our costs over a period of time. And then with the retirement, you always had people coming in and going out. From an operational standpoint, I'm not talking about the viability of the state pension fund or any of that, but from an operational standpoint, this is going to impact just not us, but every district, because you're just not going to have that flow of people coming in and out. All your costs, you know, when you do a salary increase, oh, 90% of the teachers will be a top step. You know, and no one really priced out those costs. So again, it's just something that we need to be cognizant of.
Well, you and I did, Mr. Rier.
Yes, but they don't listen.
We don't count.
They don't necessarily listen to us.
So what's the average age of retirement for the teachers in our district now?
67.
They have to be.
That's the
Oh, you mean, age, age?
No, so in the last 10 years, how old is the typical teacher when they retire in their 50s?
They were late 50s.
Late 50s.
Early 60s.
So you're basically just sort of enshrining this older cadre of higher-paid teachers?
Yes.
Yes.
That's what, and again, it's, I get the financial piece, what they were working on, but from a practical standpoint, an operational standpoint, and I'll get on my soapbox, having people in their mid to late 60s, I'll be one of them, I don't know if that's the best thing that we want, because teaching kids
Careful.
Takes a lot of energy. Hey, I'm one of them.
It slows over, the turnover of employees is slowed, and by doing that
It's almost nonexistent.
You potentially could save up to $40,000 a year by bringing in a low-step family plan, a single, with a full, you know
First, a 10-step person. And that, so, I digress, I apologize. And just going through the list here, through the categories
Actually, one other quick point on the health insurance, while we're on benefits. Our assumption is our health insurance premium, or their rates are going to rise by 9% next year. There's always risk involved in that first pass of what we put out there. I'll find out probably by the end of this month what our actual renewal rate is, and be able to recalibrate the budget if it differs from what our assumption is. But I just wanted to make sure everybody understood that that's just an assumption that we use.
And I think, and I want to go to the assumptions.
And last year, it came out a little low in the end.
Correct, and it's significantly based on how our run rate of expenses are for this year, and we're doing fairly well, at least the last reports that I looked at. So I'm optimistic that that's a fair assumption.
But I want to point out that our first budget that you're seeing tonight, we're asking for $28,859,136. It's not the number that was used that I read in the paper, that was talked about at the town council meeting last night. This is our number.
I gave you the paper, everybody, of what they said it was.
So I think he was just using the prior
He was just using the
But it was
He was just using the, the average that we said.
But it wasn't what we were asking for, because it appears in the paper, therefore it's gospel. Sometimes people only read the paper once, and that's what they'll see. So I just kind of want to, like, to point that out, and we'll keep pointing it out. But our overall increase in dollars is $941,739. And you can see, we broke it down at the top for you, what the local share would be versus the state aid increase.
And this is just our first pass?
That's correct.
It's really early.
Which one of these has their number?
Property. Property accounts, primarily that's the maintenance of our building and some of Al's technology supplies. Like, that's where we would charge our wastewater treatment consultant, those type of figures end up there. Al's hardware is in that account, some of the software, and we have a pretty modest equipment budget of $4,200 in furnitures and fixtures. It's primarily our wastewater treatment upkeep and consultant.
So that's, so we actually have a salary in that line, because it's not, you know, it's an individual salary?
Our consultant ends up there, our onsite custodian that works there, stipend, ends up in the salary line.
Yeah.
That's an outside, right, the outside agencies, consultant.
Yeah, the engineer that we use to
And the engineer, they're filed under property.
Yes, that's, that's how, that's how Ride asked.
So Superintendent Rier, do you want to finish the rest of your presentation, or do you want to get in? I have some questions, obviously, on the detail.
Yeah, let me just
That make up these numbers, but you tell me how you want it.
Sure, let me just finish, and we'll let you have at it. Okay? New staffing requests, there's one, and my little clicker's not working. Al? All right, this is technology. Being an old social studies teacher, we adapt. I'm asking for one additional, not even a position, it's two fifths of a position. In your folder, it says remedial reading position. It's really, I did this when I had the flu, so I apologize. It's remedial math position, and it will be at Ranger School. Currently, right now, we have a four-fifths remedial math position that is split between Ranger and Fort Barton. And in an effort to improve Ranger's scores in math, after talking with Mr. Cabral, we believe that this would be a very cost-effective method to help target that population that seems to be struggling with our math on the kneecaps. So I'm recommending that we would hire an additional two-fifths position for that purpose. And that would be the only additional teaching position that I'd be asking for in the budget.
Everything you're talking about right now is on top of what you presented.
Or already in there?
Yes, that's in there. It's in there, it's in there, but it's different, it's new from this year. In other words, we don't have that.
But it's already in the 900?
Yes, but it's already in there.
It's included in the number.
Yes, yes.
It's 2.7%.
It's in the 941,000.
Thank you, that's fine.
With the exception of the capital, which is the last page.
Well, some of the capitals.
Again, talking to Mrs. Mitchell, and also prior to that, we've had several discussions about trying to pay for stipend positions at the middle school, also for the boys and girls lacrosse team at the high school. Again, these are currently funded by parents at the lacrosse, at the high school level for boys and girls lacrosse, and all costs associated with it. Boys and girls basketball, we currently rely on volunteers at the middle school. And I think for all the work that Mr. Al's and Ms. O'Neil do with our bands after school, I'd like to see that we try to get them a stipend, and these are
So how many coaches for lacrosse? Two?
One boys and one girls.
And how many coaches is the 11,000 for? I'm not, the math isn't working for me.
Two boys and two, no, boys and girls coaches.
So two at 6645, and then two at 11,000?
No, it's also lacrosse country?
No.
No.
That's my mistake, that's a typo.
And what I was trying to do
I didn't put, I didn't put cross-country in.
So there's
That was my mistake.
So there's four coaches, we don't even have track and field.
No, it should be what I have there. It was an error on my part. It should be 6645, what Mrs. Mitchell wanted
For the middle one also?
For the middle one.
So two
One boys, girls coach, one boys coach, one girls coach.
For basketball?
For basketball.
Also at 6645.
So that one's 6645.
But we do have a volunteer cross-country. So it seems like, since we do have that program going, we should, you know, whatever that additional, that 3323, because that would be the only volunteer position then, that we wouldn't be funding, right?
True.
You know what I'm saying? So if we're going to do the boys and girls basketball and the boys and girls lacrosse
Again, yeah, if you want to
It seems like we should do the other volunteer position, because otherwise, why are we excluding just one? I guess is my question. And that would then create a stipend for every sports position that's now either parent-funded or built by volunteers?
I believe so.
Is one coach necessary for cross-country? Is that coed?
Yes.
That's coed.
Yeah, that's coed. A lot.
For cross-country, they run by forty, fifty kids? At least forty or fifty, I see them run by every day.
No, there's more than that.
And basketball
Basketball
Many try out, but you only can have so many.
How do you calculate, how do you arrive at the number for what the stipend should be?
It's tied to our contract. Coaches.
Oh, I see.
Coaches and advisors are tied, there's a schedule we have to follow.
Okay.
And we did, just for background, for Mr. Larkin, we did, when we approved the lacrosse, and when we approved the cross-country, and we approved the basketball
And basketball.
We did say, this is predicated on the fact that we didn't have any money.
Right.
But we have been trying every year
It was in last year.
Yeah, to try to find, to put it back in, because while the parents have done a great job funding it, and they understood that it was started without the promise of funding, it's very difficult.
Sure.
Very difficult. I mean, we think $3,000, you know
It's not a lot of money.
It seems like it's not a lot in comparison to our big budget, but I mean, it's a lot of money to fund it.
It is a lot, it is a lot, yeah.
And they do it year in and year out, so, and both of these programs are very, very popular. But I would like to see if we're going to fund all of the other volunteers
We can make that adjustment, we can make the adjustment.
The 3323. So that would go from 11,404 to
To nine.
Whatever, yeah, nine. To, what number is in the budget, Doug? The 11,404?
Half of that, so 5702.
No, you told me to put the 11 in.
But these are, these are $4,000 on the scale of who we're talking about.
Oh, yeah, I know, I just, I'm just asking what's in the budget, is all I want to know, yeah.
It's the number that you have on the screen.
Actually, so we'd be saving money with that, because 11,404 is in the budget.
That's what I wanted. Yeah, just what was in the budget.
Again, that's it as far as additional coaches or stipends. For the district, for capital, I have in the budget, it's something we've talked about, whether or not the committee wants to pursue it this year or not, it's entirely, you know, something we do have time to discuss, is a facility study for the middle school and the high school. Again, the high school is 47 years old, middle school's 36 years old, 37 years old. The high school is at its limit as far as how long the school should function for, and the middle school's getting there. I've talked with Mr. Smalley from J C J Architecture about what a reasonable number would be, and he said between 50 and 75,000. So I took the low-end number. And in the facility study, it would come out recommendations as to whether or not it would be worthwhile to overhaul the schools, depending on what we need, or would it be more cost-effective to possibly look at a new facility down the road? I don't know. I don't know what the study would say. Alls I know is that we have boilers that are 47 years old in this building. They run on an on-off, essentially an on-off switch. They're not cost-effective. Our windows haven't been replaced in at least 20 years here at the high school. I don't think they've ever been replaced at the middle school. The heating system at the middle school is also antiquated and not efficient. Our lighting is not what it should be. I just think we need to have someone come in, unbiased, do a thorough study of both buildings, and tell us what we need, before we ask the taxpayers for more money, regardless of what it is. We can then, let's say the only thing they find is heating
Yeah.
At least we'll have a number
Right.
That we can count on, that says, well, this is a pretty reasonable number. We're confident that it, what it will cost, this is why we're asking for it, you know, two or three years down the line. As opposed to us saying, we need new boilers. We can say it, we know we need it, but we're not experts
Right.
In facilities. Even if Mr. Reynolds was here, we don't have the cachet with the public to say, we need to expend hundreds of thousands of dollars possibly on certain things. We need to make sure that we're spending it on the items that we need to spend it on to keep the buildings functioning. The goal would be, obviously, to keep our buildings and get more lifeblood out of them, but that's what a study would tell us. So that's why I put that in there, for your consideration.
Now, the town side received those energy grants, remember? And they used them, and they said they've seen a big savings in the heating of the places because of it. So that was good. I wonder if there's any energy grants, do we know, to look for?
No, not that I'm aware of, but fortunately, our new schools are much more efficient than
Yeah, that's what I mean. That's what they found when they replaced everything.
So that's not in
Correct.
What's not in?
The 50,000 is not in.
In prior years, there's the mention of broken plumbing and water fountains in the high school. Have they all been repaired?
So the point were
So we have, all of our toilets flush, our sinks work, and our water fountains are working at the high school?
On a day-to-day, week-to-week basis, we assess all of the water fountains. And yes, we have replaced the number of water fountains with stainless steel water fountains. There are some of them that we've assessed, that we determined probably that we will just disconnect, remove, and wall in, because students don't use them. We encourage, you know, bottled water is brought in very often. So we have a suitable amount that we have replaced. We have upgraded sink hardware in the last couple of years. We did an upgrade to the lower boys shower room probably about six to eight years ago. But week to week, we deal with plumbing issues that any old house or any old building would deal, would have to deal with.
So can I just clarify?
I understand that any moment, he may move the toilet.
No, although he did have an issue the other day that flooded his office, but we, it was addressed.
So the money for the study is not in the budget?
I was going to touch back on that. The facility study, as well as the other two items at the end of the budget, the school resource officer and the fire suppression system, I didn't build into the budget, because I didn't know, A, if you wanted to, A, if we wanted to do it. I didn't know, A, if you wanted to, A, if we wanted to do it, but B, if we did wanna do it, how do we pay for it?
Right.
Do we wanna pay for it, put it into the general operational budget under capital, or do we take it out of the surplus that we have? So this is an item that's, you know, something that we need, but I didn't build it in, because it's something that, you know, we don't need to put into our operational side or into the capital side.
And I would guess Mr. Cott would say, don't let it get into your operation.
Right, and we have a meeting Thursday, so.
Right.
With them, so we can get a, get, well, just, we just ask them, say, would you guys, you think that's a good use as well?
Right.
And get there and put on it.
Because when it's built into the operational budget, because of the way that state law is where we are mandated to get.
Yeah.
One dollar more, it's built into our budget.
That's correct.
Versus just.
A use of our balance, right?
Use of our fund balance, which doesn't.
Doesn't build in.
It's certainly a one-time.
That's a one-time expense, right?
I don't like the facility study. Is it more appropriate to fund with a surplus than something like a school resource officer, which is not a one-time expense, it's something we will have every year that we continue with that position?
Well, and, and, right, and the facility study, I mean, I, I don't know what the board thinks, but I, we need it, so whether we put it in or we fund it through surplus.
And again, with, and I did the same with, and again, I apologize, because I was out last week with the flu and.
What's the deal with the fire suppression?
The fire suppression, going, just real quickly, on the lockers and the cafeteria, again, they're outside, they're not built in, these are, for seventeen thousand, two-hundred-and-fifty dollars, you can get a metal grate like you see in the malls that come up and down that can replace this.
I think that's original equipment.
This is under, this, no, we checked it, all found out nineteen-seventy-six.
And that was in there last year, too.
Right, so the picture, I didn't think we needed a new picture. Neither do we need, these are the lockers, varsity locker room, they've been, I think they're originals. But keeping going, and the middle school is something we have last year, we need science stools for two of our grade-six classrooms, we really need to get them, because they're in a sad state for what they sit on now. And last but not least, are the two issues, at the time, I didn't have the price, because we got the price on Monday of this week. When the fire department did their annual walkthrough, they, they did it back in the fall, late fall, and they gave us a list of items that we were non-compliance with. We've met all the other, the series of items they gave us, except for one. For some reason, or apparently, I should say, we need to, in order to meet the state code, put fire suppression systems in the two wood shops at the high school and at the middle school. Now, we've been going through these walkthroughs for years, it's the first time I've, we've been cited for it, we've been cited, we need to address it. So the cost, we brought in a company that, that does it to give us an estimate, we talked to the fire marshal, the local fire marshal, and based on what the fire marshal said in the report that we have, it would cost approximately sixty-two thousand to do that work in the three rooms. The other issue is the, the high school resource officer. I met with Chief Blakey about this, and the number that you see there is what the cost would be for a police officer just hired. It's not Officer Cabral, it's not anybody, it's just a number. It's a position.
The position.
If the chief, if we were able to work something out with the town, that's what the cost, projected cost would be. Now, we have a meeting this Thursday with the town council, I think, and the budget committee, I think this is something we need to talk to them about, is to how do we go about, and I'm recommending just a school resource officer, just so that we get back what we had a couple of years ago. Obviously, the committee can say, we want more, or we don't want any, or whatever.
So this would be a school resource officers that, that the five schools would share.
That would service the five schools.
It would rotate through the five schools.
It would be a, one person that would service the five schools. So, again, those, not in the budget, it's how do we wanna handle it? Do we want, you know, the facility study, do we want the facility study? If we do, do we take it out of surplus, or do we build it in? Same with the other items, the, you know, the lockers and things like that, and the fire suppression. Fire suppression, we have to do.
Well, those are one-time, but like Carol said, the resource officer, I think we need to talk with the town about how we're gonna share that cost.
In the past, it was funded by the police department.
Right, the chief had a grant, I believe, a federal grant.
But it was a grant that he applied for the grant.
And what I think is important on the school resource officer, when we talked to the council, is I don't want the, the police department to lose anybody. In other words, I, I, in other words, if we're willing to offer money, whatever that may be, it's so that, it's in addition to what the police department, I don't want them, you heard the chief here last month saying, you know, they're strapped as it is, I don't want them to have to lose somebody, you know, to, to help us, in other words, we should be willing to work with the town to say, here's X dollars from our side, so we can have a S R O, but, you know, the town's not gonna be hurting on the other as well, so.
But you're right, I think that's a bigger, that's a discussion we're gonna have to have with three bodies.
And I told the chief, I said I couldn't commit to a percentage, I couldn't, I mean, I felt, I said, I felt the committee was supportive of the school resource position, how we're gonna go about paying for it, you know, that, that's for, for us to sit at.
And it's up to the chief, that whole thing of who it is and everything, we have nothing to do with that.
That's entirely, that's entirely the chief's decision on how, who becomes the school resource officer, I know there's been a lot to do about it internally in the police department, but it's certainly the chief's decision, not ours. And that's the summary.
While we're on the school resource officer, I just wanted to quickly make sure that I point out that a school resource officer isn't a police officer with a gun in the schools.
That's right.
Absolutely not.
Actually, someone emailed me after our last safety meeting saying that's what it was.
No.
It's the farthest thing from that. The resource officer is there to work with the kids, he gives programs, he works with the administrators, he works on bullying, he works with drug and alcohol, it's a very comprehensive position, he's specially trained, it is not a policeman with a gun.
No.
It is, it is a resource that, that we use that builds a relationship between law enforcement and our children, does, you know, and, and it's, it goes way above and beyond that, because I did have someone that did email me after our safety meeting and asked me if that's what we were doing, and that is not what a school resource officer is.
Actually, Diane and I were looking for it, because it was part of No Chair Left Behind Twenty-Fifth Century Safe and Drug-Free Schools, that's how we got the grant, I gave that to the chief and he sent it in, but it's just what Deb says, it's an entirely different relationship with the community and with the kids in the school, and it's wonderful.
Certainly, you know, he is there to help with safety and would be there for drills and those kind of things, but it's much more than, than that.
Currently, we have a halftime one?
The S R O has been assigned, the chief assigned Officer Cabral for the remainder of the school year to the schools, that took effect Monday. He, he felt that after our meeting, he would work it out.
Oh.
In his budget.
Okay.
Internally, on his side, to provide it to Officer Cabral for us.
We should probably thank him for that.
I did when I met with him and said, we'd be certainly wanting to work with him and council on trying to help alleviate the costs for next year moving forward.
In the first half of the year, Officer Cabral was in the schools on?
He tried to get in once, one day a week, that's correct.
Yeah, he used to come by.
He'll be there full-time, yeah.
Every day the school's in session.
And from talking to the chief, I believe Officer Cabral's developing a schedule so he can be in all the schools, you know, throughout the week.
And he's gonna manage that on his own for the rest of the year.
That's correct. So thank you to the chief.
Yeah.
Chief Blakey for doing.
Our school resource officer will be in full-time, good.
And also, besides the PowerPoint, which was just a brief overview, you have the line item budget that we present, as always, to you. So if you had any specific questions, we can take them on, but again, just in the budget, some things that aren't in the budget besides capital, I am still, I'm finishing up the presentation on technology, on computers, as to where we are and where we're going as a district, so there's no real additional technology, especially after the committee was generous enough to purchase a hundred computers at our last meeting. The elementary principals did ask for an elementary library aid, but it did not make the cut, nor did a part-time nurse at the middle school, or an additional middle school guidance counselor. So while all of those, the principals made excellent justifications for, I just felt that with the constraints that we have with the budget, we needed to go forward with what you see, and also professional development costs for the two P D days, we're hoping that any costs that we have will be able to come back to the committee, and we promise you that we, we're working on our schedule now for next year for our teachers, and any associated costs with them, I would ask that we probably look at our reserve fund to, to pay for that, but that's what you, what you see in the budget. January fifteenth, our preliminary budget needs to be submitted to the budget committee per the town charter. By March nineteenth, our final budget has to be presented to the budget committee. April fourteenth is our supplemental budget day, in case we feel the need to submit a supplemental budget, and May twenty-first is the F T R.
It's my birthday.
Oh, then it's gonna be a good one.
We'll have a big party then.
We'll have a lot to celebrate.
I, I do have a couple of questions on the detail, Doug.
Mm-hmm, sure.
Did we do a lot of reclassifications on the sped services?
Yeah, there's always, and that pertains particularly to the added district.
And were we moving them, were we moving them over to the purchased property?
Yeah, what happens is, there's a couple of different things, a couple of times the classifications and the definitions change in the uniform chart of account, but even more to the point is, each year, the mix of students differ and their services differ, so it's hard to, I, I use the current year budget to project.
Right.
What the costs are gonna be for the following year, but a lot of times, they'll be attending a different type of facility, it changes the line item, so what I do, and this will probably help you, is I roll up all of the sped costs, and it, it's about four million dollars, and when you go year to year, our increase is about four hundred thousand, if you take the aggregate of all the sped costs, and that's pretty much.
Of course, they are all the same.
But also, Deb, you brought it up, I have, wanted to point out, that under purchased property services, you see a seventy-five thousand dollar increase.
I was gonna ask, yep, that was one of my questions.
What, a lot of people don't realize.
And that's, that's tuition to other districts.
Yes, but that's.
There's a story with.
There's, it's two line, it's two pieces, one is Rogers.
Which has always been there.
Which, which has always been there and is, hasn't increased that much. The significant part of that increase has to do with the fact that when they passed the funding formula, they also passed provision, they had districts that were in the Met School area, and I wanna phrase it correctly, the Met School's in Newport, when they developed the Met School and started it, it was for free, everyone could go there, no cost, state paid for it. State doesn't pay for that anymore.
So we pay for the Met School?
So we pay for the Met School.
Well, what happens is there.
And they graduated the, the increase to right now, next year, we're at three.
And explain for people who are watching, why our kids go to Rogers or Met?
Our students go to Rogers to provide themselves, or make themselves, they can take programs in cosmetology, advanced woodworking, more so, although I think Bill Phillips' program's pretty competitive.
They do a good job of.
Pretty competitive with that.
But it's basically, if we don't provide it, they have, we have the responsibility.
Legally, we, right, we have to provide, Newport's our region.
Yeah.
Our career center, so our kids go there, again, another complicated funding formula that goes with how, you know, Newport doesn't set the cost, they have to follow a formula. Newport's costs for educating their kids are part of that formula, and because they have a higher cost to do business.
In those costs.
It gets passed into that tuition, but our tuition numbers have stayed pretty much about the same, fourteen, fifteen kids, both part-time, full-time, so those numbers don't re, that number doesn't really move, but what's moved it is this, the Met School.
Yeah, that's an, they actually phased in the full cost of the Met tuition.
Tuitions.
Which is actually based on our cost for, for that particular assigned tuition.
Next year will be three-quarters of our cost.
Eighty percent.
And again, if, if we don't provide a certain, if we don't provide certain classes here.
Met School's a charter school, so.
Kids can opt to go.
That's right.
To the Mets.
I mean, there's nothing we can do.
Right.
No, and it's, it doesn't have anything to do with whether we provide those.
The charter school, the Met School's different.
So the Met can school.
The Met School's different, it's set up differently than Rogers, Rogers is a.
Rogers is if we don't provide a tier, they can.
Right, the tech ed's provision.
Okay.
The Met School is, anybody can.
Like the charter school.
It's a charter school. It's an alternative high school.
They don't have the same curriculum?
No, and.
It's a different, it's a different program and structure, right?
But again, originally set up, supposed to be free, they changed the, when they passed the funding formula, they said, oh, by the way, it was included when they, they changed the formula.
It started last year at twenty percent, we're paying forty percent this year, this represents sixty percent in this proposed budget, and we have two years more, the incremental increases.
It'll go eighty, a hundred.
And then eventually, we have the whole cost.
Okay.
But that's pretty much the entire increase on that.
But Met and Rogers?
Yes.
So that seventy-five is Met and Rogers?
Yes.
And then, let's see, you explained the healthcare.
Yeah, we've got fortunate.
Unemployment, why is that going down so much?
We're not anticipating having the need for that, we're self-insured there, so we have somewhat of an ability to project there.
Again, the budget is based on current staffing.
Right.
So we're not, even though we may have to do layoffs as a formality for the non-tenured teachers, we're bas, we're, this whole budget's, you know, it, it pays for, you can see how it's built.
Yeah.
It's not built to withstand a six-hundred-thousand, eight-hundred-thousand-dollar cut, million-dollar cut at the F T R. If you recall, last year, there was a, a human cry from people saying, oh, we're trying to scare people, when an alternate budget was put up that was gonna cut our budget by six-hundred thousand, but we didn't build our budget with a six-hundred-thousand-dollar shortfall in it. So what we propose, and eventually, we'll, we'll massage this and, and get the number down, but it's built for what it is, it's built to maintain our services.
It's very consistent from year to year, I'm surprised Mrs. Black hasn't mentioned our pool service that pretty much all of our expenses are, are procured through.
I have my sign in the car.
There's, there's not a lot of line items in, in our budget that can withstand, you know, a, a significant fluctuation.
Transportation contractors?
Yep.
Isn't that the bus?
It is, and our, our regular buses are pretty consistent, we have a three-point-five percent escalator in there, what's happened is, some of the, the extracurricular activities have gone up a little bit more, so that's why we see a slight increase.
And is that a, do we have a multi-year contract?
We're in year four or five, and we've, we pooled with our East Bay brethren, so we have.
And it's like three and a half a year?
Yes. And in the past, we had that, we, we, we previously had monitors included with our contract, so.
The monitors are separately.
You see the monitors now as a separate line item on our budget, which differs a little bit than historically how we've done things, but overall, I think we've done pretty well with the contract and saved some money.
And then, what was our, what's our Medicare offset and special add this year?
We have.
That only I like to know, but I like to know it.
We actually have two-fifty in, in projected Medicare offset for, for next year.
We're projecting to use zero of our surplus.
That's correct.
And no retired teacher retirements?
That's correct, we don't have any built-in to the budget.
We don't have any, the only persons left is our A D and I think Bob's leaving.
There are any folks that are eligible.
I think Bob's the only.
Yeah, but we're gonna tie him down.
Yeah, I think he's really the only one that was eligible.
He's not going.
And the, the decrease, the, yeah, that's right.
That's true.
It's going calm.
He's gotta stay.
The decreases in energy, those are locked in, correct? Because you.
That's correct, where I, I, when I went through the, the two thousand and twelve and what we've incurred so far, when I saw some trends that looked like they were gonna continue.
You locked into those contracts a little bit.
Rate-wise, we're, we're locked in, but what I tried to project is the usage a little bit, so if I saw a trend going one way or the other, and you can see that, I think I moved gas in one direction, and that's just based on what I saw over twelve and thirteen.
Okay, that's for mine.
Overall, just to recap briefly, we're, we're up in total about nine hundred thousand, it's really four categories that, that it boils down to, we have our, our salary of about three hundred thousand, the health insurance is up about another hundred thousand, sped, our ten percent increase is about four hundred thousand, and the Met School increase rounds to about a hundred, so those four items total to our nine hundred thousand, and that's pretty much the story of our, our budget request over last year.
Okay. Those were my details, I don't know if anyone else had any.
I think it's, it's very austere in the sense that it really represents, just to maintain, it's really to maintain where we are, outside of, you know, a couple of items that we talked about. I mean, in the past, we were, you know, in a much tougher place.
We've increased the budget slightly at the elementary schools for upkeep, we're starting to see some signs of age now that they're five years old, but I tried to offset other savings, like you saw maybe in some of the fuel accounts, but that's why overall, we're, it's three-four, and then the impact on the tax rate would be two-point-seven percent.
So the current.
Salary in, in, in total is point, three-hundred-and-thirty-two thousand on the salary line specifically, which is very close.
It's two-point-four.
To, to what we had projected with the impact statement of the contract, we have some movement of personnel there, but that's pretty much what we expected, there, there certainly wasn't a surprise on that line item.
And again, to point out, when we approved the contracts, there were, there was a lot of criticism saying that we couldn't afford it.
Was that compounded?
Well, it is, we can afford it, and here's the numbers to show that we can, and right now, we're at two-point-seven on the local side. On the first pass, I think we're in a pretty good place. On the first pass, I think we're in a pretty good place.
I went back five years, and our average increase is 2.4% if this, if this were to be adopted, so I thought that was pretty reasonable, and this is almost $300,000 below the cap amount, which, like we mentioned before, is almost unprecedented on a first pass. So, overall, I was pretty pleased with the way it fit together.
So, our current surplus is three-something?
It's a little, depending on how, on some of the decisions that are made with the one-time capital expenditures, it's going to be around three.
Because we've expended with the chairs.
136 or something like that.
Right, you're right, about 135 or so, yeah.
So, that's, that's the 300 and something is before or after the 136?
It's after.
That would be after.
It's after.
It was 415 the last time.
Okay, that's, I guess that's my, my real question. So, then.
And that does not include the $400,000 that we've set.
Right, the set aside for the septic is not even.
We don't touch that.
That's escrow.
But, but 62,000 has to go for the fire system.
The pressure.
And if we did $50,000, we're sort of burning through the surplus rather quickly.
That's why you do have, again, tonight, if, for the committee's permission, I'd like to just send forward with the changes on the coaching stipend, just submit it to Chris so we're compliant.
Provision.
You know, with a provisional budget. Again, I would like, you know, for us, on Thursday, we get together again, again, to talk about, with the town, about that funding piece on the SRO, and also with Chris about the facility study use and this fire suppression. Having past conversations with Chris and other members of the budget committee, they usually don't have a problem with it, they, if it's one-time needed, which these are both needed, I don't think they'll have a problem with either, especially the fire suppression, but, you know, we really need to talk to them about that as well on Thursday. And then, we come back on our next meeting on the 22nd, our next regular meeting, and we can talk about this further.
Specifically to your concerns about our balance, though, we're also projecting to have a positive balance at the end of this year, because when the state aid number came out, the real number, it was about $280,000 higher than what we had projected at the beginning of the year. So, we haven't changed our spending habits, we're still under our original assumptions, so we should finish this year with some funds available as well.
Yes, yes.
2013.
And the audit will be coming out soon.
Right, pretty much all of the information that we've been presenting all along has been confirmed by the audit.
The end of January, I think he said, because he was away for the next meeting.
So, it's not done yet?
Yeah, they did, I don't think they filed for an extension, so the audit should be on file, but I haven't received our copy yet.
Yeah, but they're going to come to the town.
The auditors are coming to the town council.
They're going to come the end of January.
So, do you need a motion?
Could I have a motion to send this provisional budget?
Motion to submit provisional budget with the amended changes for the coaching.
All those in favor?
Thank you. And I'll also have a summary, I always put a executive summary.
Little summary, yeah.
For Chris.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
More numbers?
Three-year forecast.
This is simple.
Three-year forecast.
Again, per the charter, we need to submit to the town a three-year forecast. What we do, it's not rocket science, if you look at the numbers, it's a 4% cap number increase, and we use the state aid projections that RIDE gives us going out, so that's how we project it. We don't go to the cap, obviously, but for the sake of being compliant, we just submit it, because we don't, no one really knows what your numbers, your budget's going to be three years out as far as operationally. So, we just use the 4% max.
The intent of this report is to go to the state on the municipal side to make sure there aren't any red flags out there where there's, you know, a massive deficit looming for any particular school or community. And I've just demonstrated by going out the three years here based on assumptions that we've historically made, that, you know, things appear to be safe for us, assuming.
That we don't have any big negative numbers.
Going forward.
No surprises.
And I have forwarded this to the town side, and I believe they've incorporated this into their three-year forecast, and once that's finalized, I'll give a copy back to the school committee once they're, they're united with the municipal side.
I just wanted to clarify, because this is in the backup and because it is available for the public, I, Mr. Goncalo's letter to us indicates that our IGL 16221B says that we have to submit this to the council, but in fact, if you look at 16221.3, which he wasn't looking at at the time, and I did submit to Clerk Mello, that in fact, the term town or city council is defined as the public body who is responsible for submitting the budget to the public, which in our case is the budget committee. So, just so we all understand, our legal responsibility is to submit this to the budget committee, and yes, we copy the council.
Of course.
But Mr. Goncalo, I just didn't want there to be any confusion, because this, he is incorrect, that we do have, that we don't have to submit it to them, we have to submit it to the budget committee, and I just want to make sure that that's.
We have that discrepancy every year.
Yeah, and Mr. Tice has clarified it, as has Mr. Robinson, but, and I did submit it to Clerk Mello, but I think it was after Mr. Goncalo had written this memo, because I just don't want there to be confusion, that state law, in fact, is very clear on who we submit this to.
Right.
Just want to make sure we're submitting it to the right people and that we are doing it according to law.
And we've given them that every year, and the appropriating authority in the end is the people in this town, it's not the budget committee, it's not the town council, it's not us, it's the, it's the people. And as I looked through my files, I was going through my archives, and the tax cap used to be 5.5, as you all know, till private, we passed the, I mean, it went down to four gradually. But our state aid in 2008 was 5.1, you know, then all of a sudden, we get this legislators to town, "Don't count on it," and then it went down to like 4.3. That was a huge hit for all of us in the school departments and in the towns, and then they took away all this municipal sharing that they're supposed to give, they don't share anymore, they don't give the town anything either. So, we all went through some very difficult times, but now it's going back up, as you can see from our files, and that's the next thing on the agenda, it's the pledge to education. You've probably all seen it on television, and it's all different people, from the Chamber of Commerce to the foundation, to superintendents, and teachers, and parents, and children, and it's just, you can look at educationpledgerodeisland.org, and you can make a pledge to what you're going to do to support public education, and all those people have been on, and Governor Chafee says at the end, "I'll do whatever it takes," and we're going to hold him to that, because last year, he did put it, oh, yes, last year, he did put it in the budget to support public education, and the General Assembly supported that, and that's why we get more money, and so we're going to encourage him again.
Absolutely.
I will be there to do it, thank you very much.
I took the pledge, I signed up.
And so, if anyone wants to, you can go in, you can go online to educationpledgeri.org, and I think.
As long as I didn't put my face on TV.
Yeah, well, I thought you should have been on.
No, I don't think so.
I could have dressed in a nice gold outfit.
You would have been our representative.
One woman did have quite a nice outfit on, I have to see where she got it.
Gold?
It was gold and black.
It was a must of our education.
But it was, it was lovely. So, anyway, that's what the pledge is about, and Amy Mullen had called me about mentioning this in public, so if everybody could just try to, that's great, that's great.
That was, that was.
That's wonderful. So, any parents that are watching, or family members, or anybody else, or children, even to the children can do it, pledge to do their best and all that. Okay, so, thank you, that was what the pledge was about. Okay, anybody else have anything else?
Quickly, I have the December financials I'm going to pass out to the committee, I didn't want to put it in the package, because there's quite a few numbers already in there, but my staff did such a good job in closing out December so quickly, I felt obligated to.
We also, while Doug's passing that out, we also have, I sent you a couple of stories that appeared in the local newspapers about our video conferencing at the middle school, where Mrs. Dias Mitchell able, not only started the program, but is also able to secure a grant for a nice big 50-inch, I believe, 50-inch screen. We can all go there for the Super Bowl, hopefully the Patriots will be there, watch the game there, but just wanted to point, again, another successful story that takes place in our schools. Thank you to Lori and Mrs. O'Hara, who run the program.
Okay, is there anything else?
I just had a couple of things for the next agenda while we're, SRO, we already talked about. Could I put on, I want to bring forth a resolution for the school committee against the tolls, and I'll prepare that, bring that forward, if I could put that on. And I'd also like to put on an item about getting online access to the backup for our agendas, and we'll just discuss that again. Thanks.
We'll be all for that.
Okay.
I had actually one thing, you know, following the special meeting last month, I think we need to engage in a little bit more discussion about whether or not, or what, what we want to follow up on from some of the suggestions from the public, and whether or not there's other things we need to do to address security issues in schools.
Okay, you want to put that on again?
Yeah, I'd like to put that on the agenda for next.
Sure.
Mr. Huber, meeting with Chief Blakey, right along with some other ideas, right?
Yes, we've already talked to the chief, and I have another meeting with him Thursday.
So, if there's anything that you feel you need to share with us as an executive, we can put it on maybe for both?
Yeah, actually, I was just going to suggest that very thing, that maybe there's a time when we should go into an executive discussion, executive session, have a more frank discussion about what, where things are.
Sure, I'll put that on the next agenda.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
I'll have two items, one a public discussion on the follow-up.
Okay.
In other words, we took a list of recommendations, what parents recommended, what we've done since then, and then, if you want to do it in exact.